Welcome everyone in our audience tonight for the summer of the 16th Planning Board Meeting and those that are joining us by television. At this time, we have the roll call.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Here. Lyman Hardy.
Here.
R.J. Hemby. Anthony Herring.
Here.
Aaron Hines.
Here.
Ricky Hines.
Here.
Clayton Malloy Jr.
Here.
Matt Nobles.
Here.
Johnny Penner.
Here.
Kenneth Ross.
Here.
Danny Smith.
Here.
We have our, at this time, we have our prayer by Johnny Penner, Johnny, and our pledge by, um...
Let me do it?
Clayton.
I'll do it.
Let's pray together. Lord, give you thanks for this beautiful day you've given us, so many blessings that each one of us enjoy. We're just thankful for each person that's gathered here tonight, and as we begin our business session, if you please be with us, God, and direct us so that any and all decisions that we might make tonight will be in the best interest of all those parties that are served, and we just ask this in your holy name. Amen.
If you please stand towards the flag. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope all of you read the minutes of our last meeting, and we need to have it approved.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Did the minutes be approved? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you. At this time, we have, we have a rezoning request.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, for your time tonight. Tonight, we have a rezoning request from Julian Harris Jr., Richard Harris, and Dorothy Welch to rezone about thirty-four acres located on NC-33 West, parcel number 10190, from rural residential to rural agricultural conditional district to allow for the operation of a sand mine. I've provided some revised site plans and a map of the property because it changed a little bit from what was in your packet based on comments received back from NC DOT. The line was moved, the rezoning line was moved back away from NC-33 about about eighty-five feet, so it's a reduction in the rezoning area from about thirty-five acres to thirty-four acres, just a minor change. Here's the aerial view of the subject property on 33. It's close to Seville Road. You can kind of see in the aerials that there are some existing sand mines in the general vicinity, as well as some concrete plants out there as well, while most of the land is either agricultural or residential. So, as part of, to get a sand mine in Pitt County, you have to go through the conditional use permit process, so in conjunction with the rezoning request, PLT Construction Company has also requested a conditional use permit, and that's required for the operation of a sand mine in the RA District. And that will require a separate public hearing, review, and action by the commissioners. They'll hear that request at their commissioners' meeting when they consider the rezoning request as well, but you'll look at the same information that they'll see. So here's the rezoning area as proposed. The mining boundary is going to be about twenty-two acres. The development regulations in the zoning ordinance, four sand mines stipulate a hundred-foot setback from residentially zoned properties. The applicant has proposed a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback going above the regulations along a couple sides of the property, mainly where it butts residentially used properties right now. There's some existing woods on the property, and that's going to remain to provide some additional screening from the mine. There's a twenty-four-foot wide driveway that'll be used to access the mine from NC-33. And there'll be an earth berm that'll be about five to six feet high with plants on it. I believe they're proposing pine trees planted on top of the berm for, to provide additional And something was added as another ten-foot vegetative buffer along the northwest property line to screen that side of the property. We'll go through some pictures of the subject property. Now, this is looking towards the property from NC-33. And another view of the road frontage part of the subject property, looking northwest on NC-33. This is looking across 33 from the property at some agriculturally used property. Another view just across from subject property. This is looking back east on 33, towards Bellwater Elementary, back towards Greenville, and you can see the entrance to Seville Road and Harris Acres subdivision right there on the right. Another view towards Seville Road. This is looking down Seville Road. You can see there's some residential development on that road already, as well as some vacant residential lots. And this is at the end of Seville Road. It's Unity Lane. There's residential on one side, some vacant lots on the other with trees on them, and the sand mine is proposed to go on the other side of those trees right there. This is one last look from Seville Road towards the subject property, across some vacant residential lots. The property line is roughly where the existing trees are, and so that's one of the areas where the hundred-and-fifty-foot setback is proposed, along with the earth berm with trees on it. Here's our future land use map. This is kind of the guide for how we make our land use decisions. You can see there's two different future land use designations on the property, one of them being suburban residential and the other agricultural, open, and natural resource The suburban residential is intended to include residential land uses, limited multifamily, commercial, office, light industrial, and public institutional uses, given the locational criteria. Ag-open and natural resource designation is intended to include agriculture, forestry, recreational uses, open space, and resource conservation. Most of the land in this designation is located in flowplain areas, and that's the case with this property, the dark shaded green area, that's in the hundred-year flowplain. Here's our existing land use map. This kind of shows you what the land is being used out there for now. This large, large portion is undeveloped, mainly farmland, a good portion is residential, and you also have some industrial uses which are located on Barris Construction Road. Those are the concrete plants that are existing out there. And something you may remember is a commercial out there, that's a dollar store that was recently constructed, intersection of 33 and Barris Construction. And the blue you see is Bellwater Elementary School. It's located back east from the property. Our current zoning map, you can see it's largely rural residential. There is the general industrial out there for the existing concrete plants. So their quest is to rezone to RA, rural agricultural, and that's intended to accommodate very low-density residential, associated public and institutional uses, low-intensity commercial uses, and agricultural-related industrial uses, which are interspersed throughout areas that are principally characterized as rural in nature. This is also a conditional zoning district. It allows for a specific use that you can put reasonable conditions on to ensure the use is compatible with the surrounding properties. And this proposed use is, as we mentioned, for a sand mine. So, given the subject property's location on NC-33 and its proximity to adjacent concrete plants and sand mines and general industrial zone property, we believe their request is in general performance with the land use plan, and it meets guidelines for rural agricultural conditional district in our zoning ordinance. So staff recommends approval of their request by the Harrises and Ms. Dorothy Welch to rezone thirty-four acres on NC-33 adjacent to Seville Road, parcel 10190, from rural residential to rural agricultural conditional district for the operation of a sand mine. And we also advise that it's reasonable and within the public interest and consistent with the comprehensive land use plan and other applicable plans. So we recommend approval also of the conditional use permit. That's not typically a permit request that y'all hear, but since you've taken a look at the site plan, you can also give a recommended approval on the conditional use permit that will be considered by the commissioners. And here's the outline of the rezoning process. Public comments can be entertained by the planning board now. Then you'll make a recommendation to the county commissioners, and then they're scheduled to hold a public hearing regarding their request on January 11th of next year, and at that time, they'll take action on their request. So I can try and answer any questions you may have, or, Mr. Chairman, you can open the meeting up for public comments.
Well, this time, the incoming board got any comments?
I have one question. On the, the plan, the existing ditch that runs through the property?
Right.
What's going to happen with that?
Right now, I believe applicants supplying with DNR, land quality, as part of the mining permit process, I think they're proposing to relocate one of those ditches, which are both classified, you know, subject to riparian buffer rules. I think they're going to relocate one along the outside of the mining area.
Okay, nobody signed up, I understand, but does anybody in the audience like to speak on this, have any comments? We'll hear from you now, come and give your name.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Ron Sutton with Herring Sutton Associates, and I represent both the owner of this property, Julia Harris, Richard Harris, and Dorothy Welch, as well as PLT Construction, who's the actual petitioner, who will be looking to use the land as den use. This piece of land was originally owned by Mr. J.C. Harris Sr., who is the father of Julian Richard, Julian Richard Harris. And he did some development on it. He did put in one street, which was Seville Street, back to Unity Drive at the request. That was done in conjunction with the DOT to get access back to the Unity Drive area. There had been several lots sold along there for single-family houses along Seville. PLT Construction is a well-established construction company in the Wilson area that also does work here in Greenville, and they're looking to expand their market share in this area. And to do so and be competitive, it's necessary for them to have a reliable and cost-effective source of borrow material. Being the Harrises are from Wilson, it was a natural way for them to get together. It does have good quality sand on the site. I think the keys are this. One, that DOT is looking to widen this road sometime in the future to four or five-lane facility. They're requesting a two-hundred-foot right-of-way dedication that is offset to this side of the property for a hundred-and-thirty-five feet, so we requested to honor that, and we are in our design. We've actually moved back our buffering and our proposed ditch stream relocation back to that area so that once the areas, we complete the mine operation, that we can come in and, what's left, we look to leave a large, approximately twenty-acre lake or pond there, and then we look to have four large single-family lots along NC-33 for sale with the lake as an amenity to go with it, and that is the recommendation plan that we have, and that's the plan we're going to submit to also for the mining permit operation. And the key part of that is reserving the area, as you know, for safety feeling that you don't disturb that area, and that's why we're pushing everything back. So that'll allow for at least a two-hundred-foot deep lot with the right-of-way dedication. We are proposing buffers around the site that exceed, at least on the Seville side and Unity side, that exceed Pitt County regulations. You require a hundred-foot buffer, we're going a hundred-and-fifty. And that, on the Seville Street side, it will be actually a constructed berm that will be planted to provide screening between the single-family residences and the mine operation. Along the agricultural side, which is more to the northwest, we will just go there with a vegetative buffer in accordance with ordinance. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. One more thing, I would also point out that in the back here, young gentleman with the glasses and the coat there is Kelly Proctor, and he is Vice President of Operations for PLT Construction.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any questions?
I don't have any. Anybody on this board have? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else want to speak? Yes, sir, young man. You got three minutes. Come up and give your name.
My name is Ashton Kopacz, and I live on 605 Seville Road, the first three acres of property right there that was shown, and basically, I'm not familiar, well, I'm familiar with sand pits, but don't really have too much information. I just had a couple questions. Basically, how long this process would take, things like that, because I've known for sand pits to start things and put it to the side for a while and come back to redig or rework, things like that. And, and basically, how will it affect the property as far as my value, because we just moved down there, haven't been down there completely a year. I'm a veteran, I basically moved down there to get peace and quiet from the type neighborhoods and things like that, so I'm just wondering how much of noise and things like that will be going on, how many years or things like that, and will it decrease the value or keep it neutral or increase the value of my property? That's basically all my questions.
Eliot, can you answer those questions? Where's Eliot? Anybody can answer that?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Kelly Proctor. I am Vice President of Operations for PLT Construction. We appreciate you hearing us tonight. In answer to Ashley's questions, how long? A mining permit is good for ten years from the date it's issued. Whether that permit will be renewed or not will be dependent upon how long the resource there lasts, and that's going to be based upon the demand in the community. We have had some mines that we've closed out in ten years and used all the resources, and we've had some that we have renewed the permit on. As far as affecting the property value, we believe that the way the property will be left, it'll be a twenty or thirty-acre lake there with residential lots up front, that it actually will enhance the area once complete. It should be quite an attractive feature from your backyard, and, and at that time, I mean, there'll be, I'm sure, water fowl coming in. You know, you said that you do like quietness, and certainly, once it's complete, you should have a very peaceful area and a very scenic area there. You know, the day-to-day operations, this is not going to be an operation that traffic is in and out of every day. Sometimes, we utilize these things for two weeks or so, and we're not back in them for a month or so. It just, it totally depends on the projects that are going on in the community. I'll give you an example. We're doing the main pharmaceutical expansion right now and pulling borrow material out of a pit on that side of the county. We've got about seventy-five thousand yards of material to move in there from that pit. Once we utilize that, if there's another project in the area, there's an expansion of Student Union Center at East Carolina that will be bid in the community in January. Some resources may go to that if the permit is issued in time. If not, we'll look elsewhere, but that is the, the nature of the, the use for it, and I certainly, we value our neighbors and want to make sure everybody is well-satisfied, you know, through the operations. If they have any questions or anything, they'll have my contact information. If they have any concerns, I'll be very glad to address those as they arise, but historically, we've had no problems. We've got one in Wilson County behind a neighborhood very similar to this. We haven't had any issues with the neighbors. We maintain the berms, we keep them mowed, so they're aesthetically pleasing to the, the neighborhood. I don't anticipate anything being any different here, so I'll be glad to answer any other questions you gentlemen may have.
Is it going to be twenty acres or thirty acres? I mean, we proposed the twenty acres, now you saying twenty or thirty.
Well, the mine itself is twenty acres, the permitted area. We can't, we can't encroach outside of that twenty-acre area. You know, the buffers, the berms and stuff will go outside of that to encompass the entire property, and those will be located within the setback areas.
I do appreciate for all the vegetation that you're going with on the berm and everything. My main concern is Highway 33 is a busy highway, even though you're not going to be using it commercially every day, it's still a big safety area, and then you got a twenty-four-foot area that you're going in as far as a little bit slowing down if they're coming on that side of the road and turning and everything, you guys could go right by, and then I have to take a look at the people that live there, you know? I'm looking at that point that, you know, I'm kind of, you know, I just don't see that being a good entrance to it.
I don't think there'll be any issue with traffic in that area. We've had these relocated off-roads of similar nature. There have not been problems with that. Again, DOT is planning on expanding that in the future to a four- or five-lane facility, I guess, in anticipation of just increased traffic volume in that area anyway, but historically, we have not had problems with that. It's not, again, you don't have trucks flowing in and out of that facility every day. The volumes are not extremely high when you are using it. I don't think, it's my opinion, that that won't be a problem.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Any other question for me?
Oh, hey, he could, I got one for you.
Okay.
To direct it specifically, one of the comments we had on conditional use permit had come from DOT, and I had a discussion with the district engineer here concerning that, and we're going to have to apply DOT for driveway permit, assuming we get this on and we go through with the operation, and we'll have to meet any requirements that the DOT places upon us. We're, they're wanting at least a thirty-foot opening at the right-of-way. They want everything paved, at least a truck length back into the property from the edge of the pavement. If, based upon the traffic volumes we're anticipating, that DOT says you've got to put in, turn lanes or make additional improvements, that'll be a decision that be maintained to us by DOT.
You see what I'm saying? More, I'm not saying it's got to be thirty-six foot all the way, but more like a Y, so as far as turning and getting off the road safely and everything.
And, yeah, well, I say-
Kind of familiar, say landfill down there, Highway 33 landfill, how much of a Y it is. I mean, this way, you ain't got trucks, one stopping and one starting, and then you got traffic stop.
I understand.
Yes, I know, I know we're planning on doing with the expansion of Highway 33, but I'm looking at it now, and again, I would like to know from the homeowner, how do you feel about it? Are you for or against as far as the sand mine going, because like, like you said, this is a ten-year thing that can start, but it can be continued for ten years, and then you got equipment and everything that's being right there around your house, and you've done it and invested, and I know the piece of property you live on, three acres, and you got a lot, I mean, you've got a lot invested.
And we say the three acres, there are three acres at the corner, and I'm, I'm pulling this off of my memory to understand that. The actual berm would probably be located very close to their rear, to their side property line away from NC-33, so before, next to them, of what they're going to be looking back, back for three-hundred-and-five foot off the right-of-way, will be just mowed, open space area, and behind that will be the berm that screens the mine operation from the road.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen the Wilson County operation and everything, you know, and you know about the vegetation, about the trees above the berm. I, you know, been in construction all my life, now I, I understand that.
Okay, and let me just say this. In dealing with the traffic issue, we're more than willing to sit down, we work with DOT, and provide for a safe entrance to the traveling public as dictated by them. If, if they come in and dictate to us, you've got to put in left turn lane, then that's what we have to do, but they're the ones who traditionally make that final decision. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
My question is, maybe I missed an understudy. I heard you said something about pond?
Yes, sir.
Are this thing going to be fenced off so nobody can get to it?
Yes, sir, it is.
I'm, 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 I'll tell you why. I'm literally a pond designer and swimming pool, but I had some bad experience with it, and you can have signs up so nobody don't get sued, but people thought suing you now and people get drowned in it. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, I do. The entire area will be fenced in with a right-of-way type fence that you see along the right-of-way of DOT projects, and, and the DNR requires signs to be placed on that fence spaced out at certain distances around the property and all that. That'll have to be done to be in conformance with DNR's requirements. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have traveled that particular area, let's just say, in a four-square-mound radius. I've seen many of these mines with signs around them, keep out danger, open pit. It's a monstrosity. It's, it's ugly, and it's just, just left alone. In other words, there's a lot of them out there just like that, just got signs and got big, huge mounds of dirt with all kind of vegetation growing upon them. I was out on the site, well, yesterday, and, and I was concerned about the ditch. In other words, I asked about would the Army Corps of Engineers or DNR, I'm sort of like the conservationists, you know? In other words, I, I like to think that we all like to drink clean water, and I, I kind of like want to know how, what exactly are you going to do with that ditch? I mean, you know, in other words, as far as natural habitat, because I believe they say you're going to move that.
Yes, sir. We hope to do what's called a stream location around the western side of the property where that main ditch is. That will probably actually be increased in, in size, is, that's what we're anticipating at this time, and Ron may can clarify a little more on that, but that's what will be done there so that we won't impact any of the drainage features, so to speak, and we'll have to go through the proper permitting process with, with DNR and the Corps to do so, so, and it'll be done in conformance with their standards.
Now, as, as the young man that owns the property out there, I had stated, you know, what will be the, will it, I know you stated it, but will it truly increase the value of his property to have that out there?
I think the finished products will be beautiful. I think this will have three or four wonderful home sites with, with a beautiful backyard. It's, anytime you grow and expand, there's some growing pains. I mean, it will be a sand mine throughout the, the operation, but with the screening that's going to be around it, and the way that screening will be maintained, I don't think it will adversely affect things for the gentleman.
Now, keep in mind, they, as I said, in the four-mile radius, they have a whole lot of that mining going on, and it's just, it's not a, you know, beautiful site, how they left some of the sites out there. I guess my question is, are you, are you going to actually build a lake, make it look good, level things out, and maybe perhaps give the residents out there an opportunity for their property to increase? I mean, is it- I mean, is it going to look good?
The finished product, I anticipate looking beautiful. I mean, I want it to look that way. I understand the concerns from Wilson. I live on a 14 acre piece of property, and I live there because I like my privacy and the fields and stuff around it. I think that they will be pleased with the finished product. I certainly want them to be. And again, if there's any concerns along the way, I'll make sure they have my contact information so we can address them and work with them in conjunction as a neighbor to make sure they're satisfied. And the end result is something that they will be pleased to have.
Hey, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other questions?
I just have one more for the homeowner. How do you feel right now about it? And have you spoke with any of your neighbors about it? I know everybody was mailed a letter, but if you would come up to the microphone. I'm glad you came, not just to, you know, and just to.
I haven't spoken to any of the neighbors' house, but I basically call my father-in-law and my mother because we have 229 acres of land headed towards Washington, right beside Joseph Broly's sand pit out there. So I've seen how they operate and everything, and they rent from our land. But as far as it messing up anything, the traffic cuts a lonely road. I've had concerns about traffic, like you said, the way things will look. And just not expecting when I moved out there, I'd be, you know, having things going on. I've basically just been trying to get information, learn more about it myself.
You've got a huge investment right now.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And I wasn't with it at first, but like I said, I just tried to keep an open mind. I don't want to try to cause any conflict or have a bad image of things before, you know, say even starts. Give everybody a chance, you know, so I say. But for the most part, my in-laws, my wife, people, they run Carolina Earth Movement, so I know about the construction, so I worked on equipment and things. And I know how things can be left and things like that, projects not finished until able. So I do have a lot of concerns about the traffic also. We've talked about that because it is very busy out there. People always breaking down and stopping on our property. Trash and stuff is always out there on our property, and I have to do a lot of cleanup. I know the picture that they showed probably went out, but that was my property. I try to keep it clean as best way I can. So, I mean, with a lot of traffic coming, I wonder if it'll create more problems and things like that. But at the moment, my mind is just wondering. I'm just trying to get all the information I can before I can even have any type of judgment towards it. So basically, basically kind of trying to be neutral right now without trying to be stressed out about it, basically.
Well, apparently he got a phone number he's going to give you.
All right.
And he might have taken it down, he can't ever tell.
I have a question back for a.
Which one?
PLT guy.
Yes.
And maybe Eli also. My question basically is, I know you said after you're going to turn it into a lake. Is it, is it anything that is going to be put down to say it will be turned into a lake?
Yes, sir, it is. It's, that is part of the DNR permit. And also, as far as the way it's left, they have requirements in the permit, and we have to actually bond that. And they hold that bond, DNR does, until the project has been completed. They'll come out and inspect it, make sure that it is left in conformance with the plans before they will release that bond. And, you know, as far as the neighbors, in the letters, we said we're willing to meet with the neighbors, and we certainly are, and anytime they wish to do so, that invitation is still open. So we'll be very happy to meet, address any concerns they have, and, you know, try to be good neighbors and understanding their investment and their lifestyles and things of that. Those are important to all people.
And then the other question is for Eli. Has Eli, has he mentioned the other pits that we have around in that area? Is the same thing as far as like with DNR or anything that's on file that says how these pits should be left? Just off your recollection? Or maybe anybody in the planning department?
About how it's supposed to be left?
Uh huh, yeah.
I'm in, I live in the midst of a.
Of a pit.
I'm going to have a 90 acre lake when they finish. And there are requirements as far as the way it's left, from the aesthetic part to the habitat part, to the depth of the water. It's a very, very, very detailed process. And as he said, DNR will hold a bond against that company until, and it's my understanding, unless I'm misinformed, that that process will remain in place for five years after. As far as any ruptures in the damn wall or, you know, any reparations that might need to be made to it stand for five years after they exit the process. So it's a pretty detailed process that they have to, and agreement that they have to sign and adhere to, you know, prior to leaving.
And they also, DNR inspects those sites regularly. I mean, they have personnel in and out of them, and they send us inspection reports. If there's things that have to be addressed, it's in those reports, and they give us so long to comply.
And Mr. Penner's right. In fact, the newer ones, I'll say, anyone that we've had come in, certainly since zoning's been in place, we've been aware of the reclamation plans, the bonding process. Some of the ones, of course, north of the river, you've got soils conducive to these type of operations. That's why they're locating near some of these flood prone areas where deposits of sand have gone in for a long, long time. They're ripe for road construction. And later in the agenda today, you'll see, we've got an awful lot of road projects coming our way. So I would just say, you know, this is a valuable commodity, especially in that area of the county. And there's a lot of improvements coming to the county because of some of the work that's being done there.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments? There it is. Eli, I want to ask you one question. Do they have a community water out there, those houses?
Yes.
They do? Okay, I just want to make sure that nobody had a well that this pit would make the water level go down. Okay.
All right, so the staff recommends approval of the request for this, to rezone the 34 acres, parcel 10190 from rural residential to rural agricultural for the operation of the sand mine.
Okay, Aaron made the motion to approve it. You got a second? All right, you got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, whatever.
Thank you.
I just want to go on record, I'm going against it. Did you, can we do a hand vote, redo this? I think a couple of.
Yeah, let's do, if you would, Mr. Chairman, make sure we get it right.
Okay, let's all do a hand vote, all in favor? Okay. Those opposed?
Thank you. That was a one action item for tonight. And in your package, you'll also see, as I've alluded to a little bit earlier, some information concerning some transportation projects. Now, a little out of order, but we'll start with the Southwest Bypass first. This has been a project that's been a number one priority for the county at least two decades and probably longer than that. When it was first contemplated, this is beginning on page 31, actually, it was going to tie in about where Fire Tower Road comes in at PCC. And you can see during the years now, we've got a 13 mile segment that extends all the way south of Aiden. So due to some rapid growth over the last decade or so, really wasn't any way to connect them without a lot of acquisition calls, right of way acquisition calls. So on the screen, you can see the segment that we're speaking of that will tie in just west of here, off Stanton'sburg Road, and then follow south, cross Dickinson Avenue Extension or Highway 13, Four Lines Road near South Central High School to the west of it, go across Picoson, NC 903 South, and then ultimately down around Aiden. It will also be an interchange with NC 102. And then finally tie back into NC 11, the existing corridor just south of Aiden, near where the present day Snow Tractor Company is located. So good news on this project. After a lot of years of being batted around, it's on an accelerated schedule. We had a meeting with some of the DOT officials last week, as well as the acquisition group that's helping with the right of way. Right of way is currently underway, right of way acquisition's underway. Should start construction about mid next year, summer of 2016. And with this particular project, it is a design bill. So this contractor is doing both design work and will construct the project. It's been awarded to Barn Hill Construction. And the project cost surprisingly, or a lot less than what we had originally estimated. So came in substantially lower, it's still a lot of money, $156 million. And the surprising part about this, again, a brand new freeway, 13 miles long, to be completed in about three years. So we should be riding on it sometimes toward the middle or end of 2019. So just know there'll be a process very similar to when we had our flood buyout process. These processes run very similarly when you're dealing with federal or state money. There'll be a fair market appraisal done for these properties that are impacted by the new right of way. And there'll be offers made, and ultimately, they will be bought out and the property being used for right of way at that point in time. Welcome any questions about the Southwest Bypass.
Yeah, I got one.
Yes, sir.
Please, sir, come in there.
It is just south of Aiden, near the Tractor Company there.
Okay, near the Tractor Company.
Right in that general vicinity.
And going to do what, get there?
It is going to tie right into, I don't have the actual design of it. It will, if you're coming from Kinston's, probably the best way to tell you. You'll, when you, before you reach Aiden, you'll have an opportunity to veer off to your left and get on the Southwest Bypass and go around to the west side of Aiden.
You're going to go behind the Pepsi-Cola plant or in front of it?
You will still go in front of the Pepsi-Cola plant, but veer off just past that to the left.
Okay.
Yes.
And then come across by McDonald's and.
You'll be on the west side, yeah. You'll be further to the west, going outside of Aiden, toward the Green County side as far as where the corridor will be.
My question to you is not going to upset any of those stores over there. I heard one of them say if they had to move, they were going to leave Aiden, we don't need nobody leaving there.
No, this is, my understanding is going through a vacant field there. It won't affect those businesses up near NC 11. Except for the Tractor Company, of course. Any other questions about the bypass? Okay, other good news, there are several projects, I just want to give you an update. We just got this information in, it's not even included in your package, but wanted to make you aware. Several projects that we've had in our local transportation improvement program are getting bumped up. Most of them at least by two years. There's been additional funding made available through DOT. These projects have been accelerated to some extent. Just south of the area I was just speaking of, on NC 11, where it intersects with Hanrahan Road, they're making some improvements to this, to this particular intersection. Been a lot of wrecks there through the years. They're going to try to make some arrangements to help alleviate some of those safety concerns. And especially as we'll be getting a lot of folks that are coming off that main Southwest Bypass in the future that have probably gone 65 or so, once they get back on this segment, it warrants some additional improvements there. So we'll share more information with you once the design comes out for that intersection. You know, there are several roads coming in from Griffin right in that same area too.
Mr. Rose, may I say one thing about that? Yeah, I certainly think with Warehouser being right there and the traffic through there, they certainly need to take into account the 18 wheelers and, you know, better access and getting on and off, definitely.
Good point, there is a lot, you know, that's a major company here in Pitt County. Warehouser, which is just up the road there on Hanrahan, and you turn on Warehouser Road, it's right at that corner. Lot of traffic in and out of there. I don't know the exact volumes, but yes, you're right, and there have been some accidents there as well with those 18 wheelers. More locally here in Greenville, one that if you've ever ridden on it anywhere from about 4:30 to 6:30 at night is Evan Street and Old Tar Road, basically the back door into Winterville instead of using Memorial Drive. Lot of traffic on a two lane facility that is proposed for multi-laning. Right of ways to begin and right of way acquisition in fiscal year 19, construction in 21, 2021. That's well in advance of what we had seen before. So again, this has been bumped up three or four years itself. Dickinson Avenue, yes.
How far will it go?
Good question, forgot to tell you. parameters from Greenville Boulevard, you know, you've got some improvements there, but they'll go in, make some additional where it's already three to four lanes there, and go all the way to Worthington Road where the trade station is and right age right down at Winterville. So good stretch, probably a good three to four miles. Dickinson Avenue from Reed Circle, right in downtown Greenville, out to Memorial Drive or NC 11. Some major improvements going in there as well. That's going to start next year, and construction actually is initiated in 18. So the right of way next year, construction in 18. Right out our back door here, pretty much a lot of new traffic coming in, especially for the VA Hospital that's just behind us here. There will be some improvements at the intersection of Memorial Drive and West Fifth Street. Another turn lane to go in. If you've ever come across the bridge from the airport area in here, trying to take a right onto Fifth Street or Highway 43, there's usually a backup. So this will help alleviate that and get folks moving around the medical district a little bit better. Right of way in a couple of years and construction about three years out. Fire Tower Road, finally. This first section has been bumped up some. This is from Charles Boulevard leading to 14th Street. And if you've been on that two lane site, you know it backs up basically that whole segment there. That's about a mile. It's not uncommon each night that it's a, it's a good backup along that lane. Just doesn't have the capacity that is needed. So that is going in fairly soon. And likewise, this is going on further to the east. If you take Fire Tower all the way down to Port town and Port town around to NC 33, that's also going to be widened to multi-lanes. And that's on about the same schedule as that first segment of Fire Tower I showed to you. And also Allen Road, just west of here, lot of traffic out, kind of, it is the current bypass before the Southwest Bypass comes around that pretty much connects folks from Dickinson Avenue on up to Stanton'sburg in the medical district area. And this is a little bit further out, but it's good to at least have it on the schedule. Right of way proposed for federal fiscal year 2023 and construction in '25. So that's a little ways away. And then also 14th Street, going from Red Banks Road, another two or three lane segment from Red Banks Road out to Fire Tower Road is being considered for multi-laning and construction to begin in '22 for that one. And also going to Winterville now, Boyd Street, if you've ever come off NC 30 or NC 11 or Memorial Drive, also known locally in Winterville as Winterville Parkway. And you turn on the Boyd Street, you know how narrow it gets through there. That street is proposed for widening and looking really no right of way. They've got sufficient right of way, but doing some improvements through that area. And another one for folks that are in around Winterville, actually punching Laurie Ellis Road out to connect with Winterville Parkway or NC 11, that will give folks another. Uh, that will give folks another access point out onto the main highway there. So that's proposed for construction in twenty-twenty-four. So those are all the new, and all good news here, because these are items we've been asking for for quite a number of years. They've been on our plan, and finally, with some additional funding, they're being expedited. Any questions about any of those? If not, did want to make you aware of the most recent solar farm. This was approved by the commissioners, um, back last month, and this is at the intersection of NC Thirty-three West, right at, close to the Edgecombe County line, and it's, uh, intersection with Penny Hill Road. About, uh, nineteen acres there on that site. We've got your monthly report in your package tonight, and also some articles that we've collected during the month. And you can always see some other activities we're involved with on our webpage that's shown here on the screen. Welcome, any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd just like to say you're, you're doing a fine job, and Pitt County is growing and expanding, and it's, it's all exciting.
Well, we're seeing, I will tell you, over the last few months, we've seen a lot of, um, new building permits, um, coming through. Basically, all those subdivisions that were reviewed and approved back in the mid-two thousands, that we had a lot of vacant lots for a long time, those have just about been used up and built on now. We're seeing new subdivisions, subdivisions being proposed, and an awful lot of new construction that we just haven't seen in several years. So you're right, a lot of things coming this way.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for coming here tonight, especially, uh, Commissioner Coulson, he's always here. He's always supported us, and I appreciate what you do, Tom. And, uh, this time, not, and further come forward aboard, we'll adjourn.